Call the meeting to order Tuesday, March 17th at 6:02. Yeah. We'll call directors please. Barnes?
Here.
Baumann?
Here.
US?
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
Burmey?
Here.
Kaiser?
Here.
Maple?
Oh, she's coming.
She'll be coming. Yeah. And Ziegler?
Yes.
All present. Item three, pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Moving on to item four, rule of the agenda.
I have a small more.
Okay, we have a motion by, yeah, in a second, by Mike. Yeah, we'll go to Mike. Further discussion. One question I do have Amy is, is in the financial, we decided to bring two items forward to the full board. Do I need to note that now? No, I think when you do your consent to jump into what you were saying, hold it. Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion will carry. Sorry, I forgot about the relay there over there. Um, we'll get approval of the minutes from the regular Board of Education meeting, February 18th.
I'll approve the minutes from February 18th.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Kelly and a second by Mark. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion will carry. Item six, the public forum. The public forum provides the public with the opportunity to ask questions about or address issues included on the school board meeting agenda. General operating rules of the public forum will be determined by the board president once the number of people wishing to speak is identified on the night of the meeting. Prior to addressing the board, please clearly state your name and address and address and share with the board what agenda item you are speaking to the board on. At this time, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the board? Yes, Bernie?
This is Ms. President. My name is Bernie Kramer from 2150 East State Highway 153. And somehow or another, I got on that strategic planning thing and, and I think that really is a dog and pony show, to say the least. When you know what you want to do and everybody knows, uh, uh, what has to be done. But anyhow, uh, and you feel like a robot when you sit there, you can't say anything. I know the first meeting, I wanted to speak up, the superintendent said, no, 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 you can't say anything. You just, you just sit quiet, okay? So anyhow, here we are now. And then I see this here swing pool thing now. Now, this here is quite a document that was wrote up. Uh, it is really a professionally done, it better, it doesn't get any better. However, you know, you approved $300,000 expenditure in the agenda, you call it the splash pad or anyhow. You know, $300,000 and, and you've got upgrade that need to be done, auditorium and pool combined at the million bucks. It costs a $150,000 a year to operate just the pool alone. And, and with that, as a citizen, I'm speaking as, I'm no expert and I don't know what I don't know. And I, and I know that, uh, we have experts that, that do all the thinking and they know what they're doing. They always know what they're doing. But I, as a citizen, and I know a little bit about pools and I was so grateful that, uh, Steve and, and Brady took us in that tour. That was really an informational tour that, that, uh, that, uh, they really broke everything down and, and explained the, the maintenance needs and everything. And I was kind of, uh, set back because, you know, here we are, 25 years after building it and really the pool is wore out. It goes 24/7. You don't shut the switch off if there's anybody there. You have all this technology in that thing that hat, that's wore out. You gotta, and, uh, but then I look at this here and I think, well, for a citizen standpoint, I said, this is not fiscal responsibility. You want to go out, it's like the farmer that goes up and tears about 40 acres of trees up and he wants to plant more corn. And he can't take care of the fields that he's got. And, you know, we put ourselves in all the maintenance stuff that we've done. Over the years, we did a poor job of, of being current and, and I, I know one school board member went by and said, you've got so much money in the bank that you don't know what to do with it. Well, I mean, you know, that, and, and now with all this here stuff we're going through as far as the nation goes, I would be a little bit cautious in terms of, I wouldn't spend that money first. There's, there's other, with a strategic plan out there, I would hold off and I would freeze that spending right where it's at until you can look at everything and then you prioritize. I mean, this is not what you call a high-end thinking. There is no thinking, this $300,000 just to stay here and oh, now we're going to have a big strategic plan thing going. And now, well, I mean, put it all together, Brandon, prioritize. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the board? I'll ask again, anybody else? All right, we're moving on. Um, to item seven, special presentations, discussion school nurse, Sarah.
Yep. Come on up. Just want to give some kudos that, um, our school nurse has been working overtime, especially with calls to me at, uh, I don't know, six in the morning or kind of night or whatever. So, uh, I just, just want to say that she's been absolutely outstanding in all respects. Uh, coordinating not just with me, but with medical professionals in the community, including Dr. Lamont, but also other school nurses and other doctors. Uh, the Marathon County Health Department. So she's been absolutely spot on. And I am thankful and the community should be equally thankful.
Thank you very much. So I'd like to thank everybody for having me here. I'm coming to do this, uh, presentation came at a very timely matter right now. Um, I had planned this presentation quite a few months ago and it ended up just falling on today's date. So thank you for having me. I'm going to be as quick as I can here because I know we're trying to get through our information as quickly as possible. I would like to take a moment to recognize, um, our superintendent, he has been outstanding the last three weeks. I know he's been working around the clock. He's been, um, excellent to communicate at all hours of the day. And I've received many compliments from our staff and parents with the amount of communication we've had in our district. And, um, and it's been excellent. And then I would also like to thank our, um, medical advisor, Dr. Lamont, for being absolutely wonderful as far as being able to contact at all hours of the day, evenings, throughout the weekend, um, for support and guidance through all of us as well. So.
Just to speak to that really quick, the Dr. Lamont has spoken to me probably at least an hour between, all together, between Friday and the time that I made the call. So, as well, I mean, I know that some people may not know him. I know him from years ago, um, when I was in the area. So, uh, also a former school board president. So he understands the school boards very well, too.
So my name's Sarah Gettle. I'm the school nurse for Mosley School District. I was hired around the middle of last year in November. Okay, so why are we here? To review our school health services. So again, I said, I was making this presentation even before we found out about everything that we've, um, touched base on the last few weeks. And I will go over that as well. But one thing, it's good for you to be aware of what's going on in our, our buildings, what's going on in our health services. When I applied for this position last October, my husband said, he's like, you're just going to put Band-Aids on. He's like, you're going to be so bored. He's like, honey, I know you, I know you like to challenge yourself. And, um, having a sister with type one diabetes, I knew that was far from the truth. I've worked, um, hand on hand with the school nurses in Stevens Point area and I worked in pediatrics for six years. So I knew the challenges that were coming in this position. So, um, little, he was, he was surprised to find out everything that comes with it. And again, it's also law. Um, the Wisconsin administration called, say, states that we have to review and evaluate by the school district board shall be made of the emergency nursing, nursing services program at least annually. I would like to do this presentation on an annually basis, just like technology and other, um, services do a presentation as well. But I would also like to provide a written district health report possibly on a quarterly basis from here on out, too. I'm still looking at what that report's going to look like, but, um, just in case you see that report at the beginning of next year or the middle of next year, that you kind of have an idea where it's coming from. So this is my wonderful family here. So that is myself on the left-hand side. That's my husband on the right-hand side. He has his arms around my daughter. She is, she just turned seven years old. She is a first grader at Mosley School District. My son right there in the middle, he is in 4K at Storybook Kids in Mosley School District. I was born and raised in Stevens Point. My husband was born and raised in Stevens Point. He actually moved out to Minnesota, um, when about ninth or 10th grade, but he did continue to go to Spash. But, um, he has lived in Minnesota for quite, or Mosley for quite some time. I graduated with a bachelor of science in nursing from UW O'Clare in 2011. My previous position, I worked at the Marathon County Health Department. And I learned a lot of things about community resources in the health department. Prior to working in the health department, I worked in pediatrics for six years. And prior to that, I worked on the floor. So I have a vast, um, nursing history with pediatrics. I love peds and working with young youth and families. That's my passion and I really do enjoy it. I also enjoy spending time outdoors, um, cooking and gardening. So here's what everybody is probably most interested in for right now. So I purposely didn't update this slide when I sent it to Amy last week because I knew things would change. I didn't necessarily think that they would change as rapidly as they did, but first I'm going to update on influenza. I'm going to keep this information as short and brief as possible, but please feel free to raise your hand, ask questions, anything. So it has been a rough year for influenza particularly. So in Wisconsin, we've had over 19,000 cases of influenza compared to last year when we had only 19,000 at this time in the flu season. According to the Wisconsin Department of Human Resources, this influenza virus has been particularly hard on our pediatric population. And we've seen that firsthand in the health offices. At the elementary school, we generally see about 40 to 50 health visits a day. Within the last six to eight weeks, we've been reaching almost 80. And it's been very busy. For influenza, since the beginning of January, I've sent out letters to educate staff, um, been reporting absences, looking at illnesses, and also assessing our students. Now on COVID-19, where to start? So we met our first time at the end of February. And, um, Dr. Munoz and Mary Zimmerman met, we met, it was Thursday, February 27th. And he knew, I wasn't even quite aware, he had a hunch of how this was all going to kind of play out. And in the back of my head, I'm like, no way, it's, it's not going to come to that. But, um, so we met, we created our pandemic plan. We met a couple of times. We've met with our administration staff to review it. Um, we met with all of our staff, including teachers in schools as well, to review the plan. This has all progressed very quickly. At the timing of our first meeting, there were just over 80,000 confirmed cases in February with 2,500 deaths. Now, just earlier today, there's 197,000 confirmed cases worldwide and just under 8,000 deaths. We only had one case in February, now we're up to 72 cases that was just reported this afternoon. Being a new virus, there's still a lot of unknown and that's where a lot of this comes from. And there's currently no vaccine for the virus. We do know that the virus does tend to affect the elderly population more severely. And I've received it, questions from parents, from SNAP. Why are we taking such, such extreme measures when it's not affecting our children? And it's all about limiting and lowering the spread of the disease or the virus. The CDC recently announced that in the United States, that they've moved from containment to mitigation. So for containment, that basically means that they can contain the virus or disease in a specific area. When you move to mitigation, that just means that they're basically, they know it's everywhere. They're aware of that, but they're trying to, to expand the spreading of the virus. So they call, another way to explain it is flattening the curve. So instead of just having a huge spike in all of our health resources being overwhelmed, they're trying to spread out the virus exposure over a longer period of time. So then our ICUs don't get overwhelmed and our health resources are able to handle the curve a lot better if it's spread out through a larger amount of time. As you're aware, the government announced last Friday that we're to close schools Wednesday, March 18th. Many surrounding school districts, including ourselves, have closed earlier to be proactive. The administration team we met yesterday reviewed the pandemic plan. We've been educating our staff, surveillance, um, with students with illnesses and staff. Communication has been a big one, as my part. I've made it a priority this weekend to make sure that when parents email me, I'm emailing them back promptly. So I don't want them to panic. I want them to know that I'm here. And I actually had, um, a lot of parents telling me that they're, they're very thankful for that. They don't want an answer back, you know, three days from now. And I've been doing the same thing yesterday and today, meeting parents, meeting, um, giving them their child's medication if they need it. Because this was all unexpected. So I've been doing my best to make sure that I can support our district that way.
Yeah, part of that collaboration, since I'm punching all these emails out to the world, sometimes moms or dads will email me. I'll CC back, uh, to our school nurse and say, okay, here's what's going on with the school, here are the learning plans. You have a medical question, you know, and I probably did that more times than I can remember. And then, and then she would be responding actively to them. So that's, it was usually the flow, just so the board knows, the communication with parents with specific questions, especially as it relates to medical questions, but also travel questions. So we've been receiving, I know because I've seen them, many travel questions, like I've booked these things, what should I do with my children? Sorts of things. So we're just, we're going right to CDC and they have travel guidance through CDC, or CDC and these sorts of things, so.
And so as we move forward and look to how we're going to return to school, I'm going to be in, um, hand-in-hand communication with the county. Make sure that we're keeping track of students, make sure that we're following all precautions and make sure that we have a plan for isolation of these students. So in each health office, I'm going to make sure that there's a designated area that the students can be isolated before the parents come and pick them up. And again, I, the admin, everybody really in the community, not just our district, has been amazingly wonderful and supportive. Administration, teachers, food service, maintenance, um, assistance, technology, everybody has just been wonderful coming together. Um, the food service director asked me yesterday if I could reach out to some community resources at the end of our meeting yesterday. And so I went out and I was making phone calls. I actually went up to Wassa and was invited to one of their, um, meetings with the community members, with the DC Everest, um, superintendent was there. The Wassa, um, DC Everest food service directors were there, a lot of community resources. So we can stay on the same page. We're all in this together. And everybody in the community has been absolutely wonderful. I got a ton of, um, responses back. I touched base with our food service director so we can, um, we're looking to feed not only family or children, but also families during this time as well. So that is my update on COVID-19. Before I move to the rest of the presentation, does anyone have any questions? All right, feel free to ask any questions at any time, too. So as far as our health services, how many students do we care for? So generally, uh, last year, we saw in our health offices 13,000 children. Our elementary school generally sees a little bit higher, but those tend to be, I mean, they tend to be anywhere between severe to a child just needed some chapstick. So they, they do tend to always be a little bit higher and they all, they generally are very busy, but so are our other health departments as well. Middle school saw 5,400, high school saw 1,300. And if you see there, it breaks it down between injuries and illnesses. And when you look at other, those would be like if a child needs a change of clothes or chapstick or this or that. So that's what the others are. They don't necessarily fall into an illness or an injury. Our medication administrations last year were 18,000. And, and that's huge. A lot of our medication administration is, is com, can be complicated. We have a large amount of, um, students in our district that have type one diabetes and it is not just giving them a pill in the morning or giving them a pill in noon. It has a whole care plan. And if we had all night, I could review all the care plans with you, but it, they, each student has a whole care plan. And they come in and we have to, depending on what their number is, we have to do calculations and it takes a lot of, um, knowledge and education for that as well.
Uh, real quick on this slide, are you, how does this compare, if you know, if you don't, that's okay, to like other districts? Because this is good empirical evidence for us, for me especially, but for everybody here about, wow, that's, those are big numbers. How does that compare to another district like us or other districts?
That's a really good question. I did all my data together. I actually have the Wassa school district's data, but not with me today. It's, it's comparable. They, as far as, I took our data from 15 years and looked at the increases and our increases in health office visits are comparable to the Wassa school district, um, that they've seen a huge amount of increases. And these aren't just, like I said, putting on a Band-Aid. They've seen a huge amount of increases in, um, like parent expectations as far as what we do in our health office as well. We're doing a lot, um, more medication administration, a lot more health care than we used to do 20, 25 years ago in our health. And it's, and it's something that we want to do. We want to take care of our kids because a lot of times that's, I mean, we're there to support it, yes.
I would imagine that in the middle school, you, I mean, I, I would have expected to see a falloff in the number of illnesses, but included in that, is that also, uh, the administration of medication?
For the, in the middle there, under the illnesses?
In the illnesses, yeah.
Middle school, um, is actually one of our busiest offices because the kids are, the kids are realizing what, what they're feeling and they want to come and they want to be heard, they want that care. At the elementary school, they, they, it's very busy. It's very busy in all our offices, but middle school, um, and the elementary, it's like a revolving door. You know, at the elementary school, if they have a stomach ache, sometimes their teacher will just say, okay, we'll try the snack and then go, go from there. At the middle school, they come down to the health office for, for that.
So is, there's a lot of anxiety medication, a lot of kids in the, because we've talked about mental health and we've talked about the student surveys.
Oh, yes, a lot of, yep, and I actually have a slide on that.
Oh.
A lot of, you are correct in that. A lot of students that do come to my office, sometimes I, after talking with them, I actually, um, love that we have Mr. Graduleski's office right around the corner because sometimes when I'm talking with them, and it is a very busy health office. And I don't know if any of you have ever seen the middle school health office. It's our smallest one. And, I mean, kids just cram in there. So I'll take the students into Mr. Graduleski's office and talk to them a little bit more. So they're not, um, in with the other students. And sometimes I find out, um, a lot of information that I go to the school counselor, to the school psychs with. Yep, good question. So how many of our students have a known health condition requiring an emergency action plan? So in our school district this year, we have 398 students with an emergency action plan. 295 have asthma. We have 43 for food allergy, 21 for insect allergy, 11 for type one diabetics. Seizure disorders are 14 and then other serious health conditions are 13. Brady, I think this next one is. So this is where I compared the data to, so Wassa school district did this as.
I don't have permission.
Yeah, I tried pulling that up before.
I got it.
Let's just pick it up to your, a tablet right now.
Can I log into Gmail?
I'm good.
Yeah, because I called the, so I request permission.
Diane's in right now.
Got this one right here, talk about the spreadsheet.
It's weird that you know your password after looking at a book from last time.
Don't write it down, come on.
I know, I'm kidding.
I'm getting my ears out there.
It's just the same one forever, dude. One, two, three, four, five.
No password.
That's what happened in my life.
So like I said, Wassa school district, um, and DC Everest school district did this as well. They looked at their health office visits and their increases and our increases were comparable to theirs.
I'm going to go to the next one here.
That one is. Well, you need to do the same thing to that one. So what we've seen basically, and you'll see on the slide, is that we've had, in the last 15 years, we've had 103% increase in the health office visits. And in the last 15, and in the last, I believe it's five or 10 years, we've seen about 25 to 30% increase in health office visits. And the same thing goes for our students with emergency action plans as well. We've seen, I mean, 20 years ago, we didn't have one type one diabetic in the school district and we had, you know, just a few students with severe allergies. And this is for field trips, for after-school activities. That, besides assessing our students, is probably the largest time-consuming, making sure that, I know that all our teachers are up to date on what, making sure that I know any time a student leaves our building. That's whether they're going on a field trip, whether they have sports, whether they're, um, walking down to the building because walking across to, from the high school to the elementary school because they may be stung by a bee on their way there. And if they don't have their EpiPen, then that's not good. So making sure that I communicate with staff, I educate staff every year at the beginning of the school year. Every year, well, I just started this year, this is my first, um, beginning of the school year. I met with all staff. I met with the elementary, the middle school and the high school. I educated them on administration of all emergency medications, including EpiPen, seizure medication, um, inhalers and, um, glucagon. So they're all trained and they all know how to use it. And so when they go on a field trip, that, I would love to go on each and every field trip, but unfortunately, that just doesn't happen when we have, um, multiple schools going at different times. So you'll see here, so increase in 103% in 15 years, increase in 20% in the last five years for our health office visits. And Wassa school district and DC Everest had also noted that they're seeing, um, an increase in the complexity of these health office visits. It is not just a student coming in for a cough drop. You know, if the health assistants call me, um, multiple times a day and I run back and forth to the visits to listen to lung sounds to make sure that they don't need anything else, to call providers, to call parents during these visits as well.
Quick question?
Yes.
So, um, in regards to these allergies and things that would require, or kids that have EpiPens prescribed to them, how, how are we doing as a school in having an allergy-free environment where they're, they're not? Do we, do we have any EpiPen deployments during the school year?
So that is a good question. So we have, we are doing very well. In fact, at every cafeteria has an allergy-free table. All of our teachers are aware of the student allergies. The middle school is, um, a tricky population because those kids tend to, or sometimes, I shouldn't say tend to, they sometimes test their boundaries. So we had a student earlier this year very well aware of an allergy, but wanted to test purposely test her boundaries. Bee stings, at the beginning of this year, we had quite a few bee stings. We had one student, two students that I was called, um, I called EMS on ear, um, for bee stings after we administered an EpiPen. And, I mean, we were doing as, as much as we could, making trend to get those bees out, but it was in the fall. So they were pretty feisty. They, they were just trying to get inside the building and, um, stinging children, um, on a daily basis. As far as our food allergies, we had one student last year eating a bag of pretzels that she's eaten 10,000 times and they're just that big a pretzel, ended up being, um, contaminated. So, and it was something that she had brought from home. So we're doing really good as the school districts. Kids are aware of where those allergy tables are. In the elementary school, those teachers make sure that those kids sit at the allergy table unless they have a signed form from the parent that allows them to sit with all the other children. So if you can go to the other one, Brady, real quick. Scroll down. So here's our yearly medication administrations. 180% in 15 years and 30% in the last five years. That is largely due to a lot of our children, more children are on medication now than they were for. That is largely due to a lot of our children. More children are on medication now than they were for fifteen years ago. If you can scroll down just a little bit more. I think this is the one.
Good question.
Yes.
Go back to the one with the red grab. So is there perhaps a greater awareness that took place, let's say, between fourteen and fifteen in the requirement that it has to be administered in the school rather than kids just taking their medications on their own? I mean, that's a very big spike all of a sudden and it's now, so maybe there was more communication?
I think you're very correct in that. I mean, parents, I think in the last few years, parents have really turned to the school a lot more than they possibly were fifteen years ago. Maybe fifteen years ago, they were um if their child had medication, they were giving it to them. Or um they're, were giving a lot of noon medication too. Parents can't give medication at noon um at home. This one, I think, is moving when I look back at the data. So in two thousand and five, that shows the amount of critical health concerns within our district and that is um last year in two thousand and eighteen. Okay, Brady, you can go to the next one, nurse staffing. So how does our staffing ratio compare to other um surrounding districts? So I've taken, I compiled a few of our other surrounding districts. So as you can see, we're better than some, we're worse than others. The Wisconsin average nurse-to-pupil ratio is one to sixteen hundred, one thousand six hundred and twenty-five. NASN, which is the National School Nurse Association, and American Academy of Pediatrics recommend a school ratio of one to seven hundred and fifty in healthy populations. Okay, can you go back to the? So this I put in here, I'm not going to go through and read this off to you, but I just wanted you to be aware of what um what the laws are surrounding, what the district is um required to provide by the law. I do want to point out number four. Um, like I said earlier, the emergency nursing services shall be available during the regular school day and during all school-sponsored activities of pupils. So this does mean any before-school activities, after-school activities, field trips, sports, all of that and um in addition to responding and assessing students on a daily basis, that takes up probably the next um large amount of my time is making sure I'm aware of any time a student leaves the building.
And number four, now covering your sports and that and that stuff, are you there or you have delegates that are there?
Yep, so good question. So that comes into play when um I educate teachers. So I train teachers or assistants, who is ever going to be there. So good question, just um when we were, we were going to start spring sports, I met with all of the teacher or the um coaches that had stu-, that have students within emergency action plan or type one diabetic and reviewed their plan with them, made sure that they were trained, made sure that they knew what to do. So I would love to be at every sporting event, every field trip, all of that, but um it really comes down to making sure that um the teachers and everybody are knowledgeable about what they have and what the students have. Any questions on the laws? So who provides care to our students? Each school has a health assistant. Our elementary school has two health assist-, health assistants and they split their time fifty-fifty. So it's basically one health ass-, health assistant, but they split their duties between um the health office and our classrooms. This is excellent that the Mozzie School District has this. We, um, a lot of our surrounding districts, they do not have a designated health assistant in the health offices. So this is kudos to Mozzie School District for having a full-time health assistant in each and every one of our buildings. High school did not used to have this. Um, when just recently, and I'm not sure when, um, but um we had quite a few um type one diabetics move into, students with type one diabetes move into the high school and then they, because it used to be the secretary, and then they got a full-time position for our health assistant, which is wonderful because they can call me, they know where I'm at. Um, it's not the secretary trying to um to figure it out. So the health assistants follow injury in, an illness and injury protocol. So one of, if we go back to the laws, one of the laws for um, okay, number two, policies for emergency nursing services shall include protocols for dealing with people accident, injury, illness, and administration of medication. So we have administration of medication policy, but when I started back in November, I made sure that each um office had a copy of the illness and injury protocol. And I work hand-in-hand with the um the health department and also the WISHES program, which stands for, it's a acronym, it stands for Wisconsin. I should look that up, but they work um on illness and injury protocols. So I trained all our health assistants and we meet at the beginning of every school year as well. And I split my time between buildings. I provide assessments, treatments, I oversee um monitoring, making sure that the what's coming in and out. At the end of the school day, I look at all of our health visits and and see, okay, how many did we have here? What was this? Oh, I haven't seen this student. So I'm constantly monitoring all of our health office visits. Um, delegation, that is um another huge part of my job is making sure that um part of delegation is making sure that I not only train who's going to be doing what, but I also monitor them and make sure that they're doing it right. Correctly.
What is the training and education of those health assistants?
So what type of training that they receive? So we, in addition, so at the beginning of the school year, I go through all emergency medication administrations with all of our teachers, review what our emergency action plans look like. I do the same for our health office assistants and in addition, I created a PowerPoint and I created a slide for each of those illness and injury protocols. And I went over, okay, this is what you're expected to do. If you have any que-, like, this is the the way that you follow this. If you have somebody that comes in with a head bump and they have these symptoms, I want to be called.
So no medical background though?
No medical background, no. None of our um health assistants have um medical backgrounds.
Thank you.
So in the event of a medical emergency, medical emergency response plan, I just updated this at the beginning of last year. We have this at each school and that is something to point out, medical um health services in in many districts, including ourselves. We, we practice fire drills. We practice tornado drills. We practice this, um, but we do not practice our medical emergency response plan. And this is something, um, one of my goals into moving. I've had lots of goals as I've started here, but this is one of my goals that we can practice this one time year or one time a month, you know, just so when it does happen, our teachers know exactly what to do. Our, I've reviewed this with them, but reviewing something is different than just practicing as well. So why do we need to be prepared? Per CDC unintentional injuries are a leading cause of morbidity and mortality among children and adolescents in the United States. Seventy percent of injury-related deaths occur in children fifteen to nineteen years of age. Ten to twenty-five percent of injuries to children occur while they are in school. I respond to, um, like I said, school emergencies. On average, I've looked at, I tried to get this data as close as I could, but on average, I'm called about one to two times a day to different buildings than I have. So you may have received my school nurse schedule. I send it to all staff. I'm not sure if you were included in that, but so I'll start at one building. Let's say I'm at the elementary school. I go to the middle school, then I end in the high school or vice versa. It depends on the day. And about one to two times a day, I'm grabbing my backpack and running to another um school to either do an assessment, to see a student, answer a question. Um, our staff are trained on emergency medication administration in the event that I am unavailable. I provide CPR and first aid classes for all of our assistants and I already talked about my yearly health training. Oh, R. Oh, so in addition to training all of our teachers, I run off the health concerns and so all of our teachers have, and this is all a need-to-know basis, they have a copy of their um children in their classrooms and what emergency medications they have. That is a need-to-know information. I'm not giving teachers information that Johnny in third grade has um ADHD medication. It's on a need-to-know basis so they're not accidentally giving Suzie a peanut butter cookie. Um, I plan to prepare all field trips. So student-specific emergency action plans. I collaborate with not only teachers, but students, parents and guardians, physicians. This is important to build relationships with local medical physicians, community resources, and um working in the health department, I have a good knowledge of our community resources, which is excellent. And I think it's wonderful that we can work together. Just the last three weeks, that is a reason why. We all work together so we can come together. Um, I participate in five oh four and IEP meetings. We, um, Mary Zemmer, I know she's not here um tonight, but she's done a wonderful job of continuing the five oh four and IEP meetings through these closures. I actually just attended one yesterday. Worked out excellent. It's on this Zoom program. You just click on the the link and there you are. You can see everybody that's at that meeting. So that's wonderful. This goes to um your question about mental health. So school nurses are on the front lines. Mental health problems often show up as physical ailments. And I can tell you how many students that come in for continuous headaches or continuous stomach aches or um unfortunately, I've seen students in our district with um self-inflicted wounds and things like that. And I mean, it all comes in and a lot of times I'm on the front lines making sure that I can talk to that student, setting them up with their resources that we need, contacting parents, contacting physicians, um, and providing the support for our students. A serious physical or mental health problem or disability increases the risk of suicide. I had a percentage there, but it was for, there's a percentage for, let's say, a child with a seizure disorder increases their risk of suicide by a certain percent. So I wanted, I think it's about fifty percent, but I wanted to give you just a broad, not just seizure disorders. It's in general. Any child that has a physical or mental health problem, um, it increases the risk of suicide. So in addition to all of this, I also provide education for our students. That's one of my favorite things to do. Fifth-grade puberty class, which we were just holding at the beginning next month, so I will have to reschedule that. Summer school babysitting class, career education and health promotion as well. So my vision is to keep our students feeling safe and healthy. Students who feel safe and healthy are more ready to learn and be in our school. As your school nurse, I strive to provide care, education, training, management, and health promotion to support our students and their well-being in order to enhance their learning. Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you. Anybody got any questions? Thanks, Sarah.
Moving on to discussion, high school band and the Tournament of Roses parade.
Well, here's Mr. Campbell here. Um, Mr. Campbell here is the high school, middle school band instructor. Uh, unfortunately, we did have to cancel the San Antonio trip, so really bad about that, especially since my own son was scheduled to be on that trip. So that was a real tough one for me personally, but uh, Lord, Mr. Campbell, take it away. Senator Ray, yeah.
You have a spare. Just he's sending their. Um, my apologies, I don't have anything electronic created. Some of this really just came together about one week ago. Uh, but after that, I presented with you, you with, and um I just basically didn't intend to do it to Amy in time to be ready for the presentation today. So we're working old-school paper-wise today. Um, um, about eighteen months ago, Forrest Mann, who's the band director at Northland Pines, was contacted by Amy Wayne Scott, who was an alumnus of a high school and was recent, had at the time, recently been elected as the president of the twenty twenty-two Tournament of Roses Parade. And uh she's North, uh, Northland Pines alumnus and she was a band member. And she decided she wanted a band from the Northwoods of Wisconsin to come march in her parade in twenty twenty-two. Um, shortly thereafter, we had our regular uh Great Northern Conference Band Directors Meeting and he presented the information that he had at the time to all seven of us. And and two varying levels also of us were interested, although we had two outgoing band directors who were going to be retiring. Um, but basically, we we had made the decision that we, we liked the plan and we liked the fact that we had a long timeline um to start just kind of figuring out the logistics of of everything. One of the big decisions we made at that time too is that if we were going to do this, it made no sense to exclude school districts that were geographically located within the Great Northern, even though they're not in the Great Northern. Because the biggest complication would be trying to coordinate uh multiple school districts just geographically. So basically, including the other five school districts that were within the GNC, which would be, I should say, five high schools. Everest, Wassa East and West, Merrill, and Three Lakes, uh, plus the seven schools of GNC. So that, at that point, it kind of was just kind of sitting there. Last summer, when Amy Wayne Scott was back home in Wisconsin visiting, uh, we had a meeting with Forrest Mann, myself, Bill Richter, who's the band director at Lakeland, and Amy and her husband. Basically, when we had had that directors' meeting, Forrest was not interested in taking the lead on the project because he was about to become a first-time father and was afraid about having the time to devote to a project. And as I mentioned, there was a couple of directors that were going to be retiring. Bill Richter and I offered to take the lead on kind of just getting the logistics of the project rolling. Um, we decided to, we figured it was a good idea to have two people because it's a long-term project and while Bill and I both very much like our jobs where we are, life happens and if then for some reason, I, either of us would have to leave our job, that would leave someone behind who could continue to coordinate the project, find a new second person in command to kind of make sure the the project kept going forward. So basically, everything really started to ramp up as soon as January second this year happened. Because the Tournament of Roses Parade is officially a two-year project. So as of January second, the twenty twenty-two parade was rolling. So there was been a lot of work in the last couple of months, basically working out logistics with Amy Wayne Scott as well as Tournament of Roses staff of exactly what everything, how this would work um based on their past experience with um consortium bands purchasing the Tournament of Roses. Um, and just figuring out logistics of how, if all of this type of thing worked, we started getting up to a couple of different travel companies. Um, and over the course of the last two, two, oh, two and a half months, oh, a little over two months, um, Bill and I worked with Amy Wayne Scott and Tournament of Roses staff and then eventually shared information up to all the various directors. The, basically, the plan was, because by the end of January, we really had a plan in place that we felt we could comfortably share with everyone, to then share that out to all the band directors in in the twelve high schools, so they could share it with administration. Everyone got a month to kind of individually as schools decide, are they in, are they out? How does it work for them? Questions get answered, all those types of things over the course of that month. When all said and done, out of the twelve schools invited, ten are are on board. The only two schools that are not at the moment are Tomahawk. Um, Tomahawk is traditionally had a uh very limited amount of student travel, so I'm not surprised by that. Um, and Medford, because Medford is also going through retirement this year. Um, Medford has three band directors, a high school director, a middle school director, and one who shares time. The high school director is retiring, one who shares time didn't want to make a commitment without knowing that she would have support and assistance. So that might get revisited in the fall after there's a new hire at Medford. But all the remaining ten schools, from us all the way to Lakeland and Northland Pines and the schools in between, Highway Q one and forty-five, are all very much interested and have administrative approval. So basically, we wanted to, we mind everything else. We made sure we gave everyone time to work things out. So then all of us, I don't, we didn't all do it on exactly the same beat, but pretty close. All this essentially went public to students and parents at the end of February, or the very beginning of March, in a few uh instances. Um, so that is kind of where we are at. Uh, we had competing bids and that was kind of the the last thing I was waiting on, to be able to share that finally we have kind of a hard, fast number as of last Tuesday through Bob Rogers Travel. Um, I personally have not worked with Bob Rogers in the past. They have outstanding reputation. I believe seven of the ten high schools in our consortium have. Um, and specifically with our tour coordinator, Sarah, but they, they've specifically worked with her in the past as well. Uh, Rogers recently handled Green Dale's travels in Tournament of Roses this year, so they have experience doing this as well. Um, so the details kind of where we are and the layout here. Now, things have changed because basically the purpose of this, when I, when we went live, we went public with everyone, Mr. Munoz asked me, hey, I'd like you to present at the next school board meeting and kind of, you know, to share this and answer questions and kind of get people interested and excited, but of course, life happened in the last three weeks and all of you have a lot more important things to worry about right now. And to be honest, um, a lot of this is going to be on hold because the plan with them, I literally had in my calendar, tomorrow was the day that this was going to get shared out to students and parents. And then start the process of some kids signing up, eventually talking about deposits and all that would have to be done by the end of the school year. And obviously, all of that is pretty much on hold since we are no longer face-to-face with the middle school and the high school. Um, but hopefully, things will still be able to come together at some point. Uh, but basically, all of that is on hold at this point, um, on some level. Not having a feeling, I haven't taken any contact much with the other nine directors the last few days. The last time we really chatted about things back and forth by email was in the middle of last week. I have a feeling many of them are thinking the exact same thing right now. So that's the the basic plan. It's a five-night itinerary. Flying out, there's no specific airports of flights lined up yet because flights that are in advance are not even commercially available, they're not available to book in any way. We're working off of Greendale's prices as a budget and then also budgeting higher than that. We're overestimating things, make sure we keep things to a reasonable cost. Greendale flew for somewhere between six hundred and six hundred fifty per person. We're budgeting as high as eight hundred per person, just so then we can make everyone feel better when we give everyone a nicer number.
How many did you have?
What was that?
How many members you think you'll land?
We have, we actually are not certain. Our goal is two hundred amongst the ten high, well, our goal is two hundred from upfront. We also didn't think we'd necessarily have ten high schools on board, so the number might be higher than that. Because this would be a completely voluntary type of thing for the students. I mean, the commitment to the project is a real commitment. Because you're asking current seventh through tenth graders to commit to essentially an eighteen month project. And the financial commitment, obviously, between fundraising and payments for themselves is a huge commitment as well. But amongst us, we feel very comfortable, we can get into the two hundreds. That's kind of our goal. If it were bigger than that, someone asked me, what happens if you have four hundred and like that? It would be a great problem we have to solve. I would be okay with that. We have the opportunity to send that many kids on essentially a once in a lifetime opportunity for small schools in northern Wisconsin. There's never been a school from north, from northern Wisconsin has participated in the Tournament of Roses Parade, high school. All of them that have been in the past have been in the large schools in the south central, south east part of the state.
So when you say you have that many kids, you're going to do it as one huge band?
Yes, this would be a consortium band of all ten high schools. Everyone in their individual uniforms. The plan is to matching headwear, of course, we're all learning the same music. Probably match color guard in some way, we wouldn't just go completely in the kind of there, but the uniforms would also be school by school.
How much local interest do you think you have? I know we kind of talked about that a little.
Pretty good, based on the reaction I've gotten from kids when I announced and talking since then. And, you know, even say, and some of the biggest excitement was in seventh grade band in all I see. Some of the biggest excitement was in the seventh grade band. They were through the roof.
Yeah, it's a big opportunity.
Other questions, like I said, things are.
And we can bring it back to David once we get this discussion. I mean, no, but I know, but.
Pretty exciting.
Yeah, I would have never dreamed, because I never intended to teach in a large high school. I actually taught in large schools and I decided I would never want to teach in large schools. The most, it's pretty much the largest school district I would ever think I want to teach in. And I never dreamed in my entire career I would ever have an opportunity to say to kids, hey, want to go to the Tournament of Roses? Never thought I would have had it, ever.
Well done, it was a pleasure.
Thank you very much.
Thank this to the business community and the ladies.
That is some plan, especially the first thing we want to look for is the trucking sponsor to move all of our equipment across. We're also hoping that they might be able to get local busing sponsors to help really cut us a nice sweet deal of transport. Oh yeah, there would be, there would be a lot to this. And we have a lot of support from the Tournament of Roses, hope that they happen.
We'll talk.
Boy, you don't, you're not, you're not Mrs. Lamers.
Yeah, they love doing stuff, they really do.
So yeah, that was something, and yeah, the plan was to really, by the end of the school year, have a good sense of numbers and deposits, all that type of stuff. I don't know if that will happen at this point, this might be pushing to the fall. Something I've actually been thinking about a lot the last day or two. When we've had so much other things to do, I didn't want to hassle all the other directors, but I appreciate that's been a conversation for the first week of April.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent.
All right, moving on to the student board reports. Everybody has that.
I did ask our student rep not to come. So I did reach out. Some detailed information, there was quite a bit going on. Obviously, since this report is written, the ACT test has been taken. It's one of the biggest things, it's one of the last slides. So we have completed the ACT test, this is actually very quick before they shut down to get that in for our students. Yeah, I think that Mr. Lehman and I are working on that along with graduation as well. So there has been a lot of questions on both of those things and we continue to work on it.
Item nine consent agenda, building committee consent agenda. Yes, we met at five thirty four and you have everything in your packet. Any questions, let me know. Otherwise, Bernie did ask for a little bit more detail in the discussion on new business and ongoing facility issues. So we'll kind of put a little bit right to that. And that concludes my report. Okay, thank you. Item B, personnel committee consent agenda.
Hey, the personnel committee met tonight and we have current job vacancies in the district. As you can see, that the finance clerk, we are at different phases throughout the hiring of the ELD positions. So finance clerk, we're currently at the phone screening, custodial second shift. We're in first round interviews with that. School counselor, we had fourteen candidates and those interviews are currently on hold at this time. But fourteen is definitely a high number for that position, so we're happy to see that. First grade teacher, we have thirty three candidates. Interviews are currently scheduled for the week of April eighth. As well as the eighth grade ELA teacher is scheduled for the week of April eighth. And we are considering possible Zoom interviews, the Zoom meeting interviews for that as well if necessary. However, we only have four applicants for that position. Next item was the hiring process that you can see in your, in your packet as well. This just went over the overview of what we did and we had discussion on that and talked about different ways to ensure that we more widely disseminate the job postings to get better and more applicants applying for these positions within our district. Item five C was discussion and possible recommendations for the hiring and non-renewal recommendations for the twenty twenty one school year. If you look at this, the below the line, if you will, is a first grade teacher and eighth grade ELA and a middle school counselor position, those were all approved in prior meetings. So above the line are the recommendations for school EBD teacher. So that is a position that is needed along with the district social worker and then the early childhood 4K special education teacher. However, these positions would be in lieu of these other positions to the right that are alongside of that. And I'm just going to let David speak a little bit more detailed to these positions and what his thought process is for these. However, we did unanimously approve this recommendation.
Yeah, with respect to certain numbers and some of these areas as identified, like Mrs. Maple was saying, the numbers isn't justify the positions. So we're, we're looking for preliminary notices of non-renewal for, at this time, one point five teaching positions, but we're reapportioning and reassigning those positions to different areas. So we're getting a district social worker, we're adding a middle school EBD teacher. So while the reductions, I believe, are necessarily necessary and justified based on numbers in those particular areas, we are actually adding teachers just in a way, in a fiscally responsible way, especially with even enrollment.
Next item is five D, discussion, possible recommendation, approval of classes with an enrollment of fifteen and under. The personnel committee again unanimously approved this recommendation. You'll see on that handout there that there are classes on the front side of the page that are advanced AP classes and then the blue are the dual credit, which is are located on the back. So while these are just below the fifteen, we do believe that there's added value for this school year to continue with that in the coming school year. And so we're going to continue with that. However, on the flip side of this, you will see this as tech ed classes. And what we are trying to do is be more strategic with this. And so what will happen is for the majority of these courses, every other year, they will be offering these courses to increase the enrollment. So we're going to try to ensure that the seniors get the classes that they all need as they are exiting. However, that rotation will start with juniors and sophomores so that we ensure that we have enrollment numbers up.
And that's a pretty standard process, and I think explained very well. But alternating your enrollments is a standard practice when you have low enrollment numbers. It's a way to keep all of your classes while still offering all those opportunities at a rolling basis.
Again, five E is discussion, possible recommendation of additional resignations, retirees or hires. We have none at this time. And then the next item was the update on new extracurricular hires and you can see those in your board packet. And the thought, again, just behind this is with appendix G, if you have outgoing position or if you have positions that are not filled or outgoing, then you have the opportunity to add growth. So these positions here are at no additional cost to the district that are going to be in place. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And C, finance committee consent agenda.
First and foremost, if you look at your agenda, part one, engineering lab and part two, smart boards are being pulled from the consent agenda to be discussed by the full board. So first and foremost, we put per minutes, approval of budget transfers, March twenty twenty. This is a kind of a balancing of revenues and expenditures. At the, at the end of the day, this represents an overage that needs to be adjusted in our budget of three hundred ninety thousand, two hundred thirty six dollars. The vast majority of the decisions this board made in regards to a parking lot, that's three hundred thousand dollars budgeted for that. But there are other areas that it, the explanation we received was, there's things that we do our best to budget, but then the costs come in higher than that. So we did have a discussion about how to interpret these numbers. And at the end of the day, after the change in fund balance, we're looking at a projected ending fund balance of eight million, six hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and twenty two dollars. After pulling these other two issues out, the third was a virtual reality sets and Chromebooks for the library. Brady did a great job of explaining that this library fund, which is money that can only be spent within the library sciences, twenty five percent of that is generally reserved for technology and seventy five percent is used for books and periodicals and other expenses within the library. And at this point in time, for these virtual reality sets, it's going to give a new experience to our students. And the Chromebooks, my question to Brady was, we're one to one, why do we need Chromebooks in the library? Everybody can bring their Chromebook. I had thought through the answer, which was Brady's like, I do not want younger kids carrying their Chromebooks from where they're at through the schools and all over the place. And it makes way more sense to have them in the library to avoid damage. That made sense to me. So our committee unanimously approved the technology part three, virtual reality sets and Chromebooks. Lastly, we reviewed policy seventy five ten, which is community use fees. And if you recall, we were, we asked the administration to come back. These are the fees that would either be charged to an individual or charged to an individual group or charged to fund eighty based on the community use to be able to fund those. The only addition that was made on that, and I'm looking from my newspaper, was that we looked at the use of our, one of the things that was directed, there's the use of our fitness center, which is open to the community on a most daily basis, assuming there's probably pandemic going on. And since that's not rented out to profits, nonprofits or people outside the district, we allocated a fee of thirty five dollars to be charged to fund eighty per hour used by the community for the maintenance of that. The primary reason behind that figure being thirty five dollars was that we staff it with staff. We don't just open it up and leave it to the community to use. So that's a fee that needs to be covered over thirty eighty. Otherwise, we approved all of the expenditures listed on that document as presented.
Item nineteen, curriculum and standards committee consent.
It was a small committee meeting today. No activity was, no, no motions and votes had to be taken, but we received a report about the ESA accountability report, which is the Every Student Succeeds Act. It was just released a couple of weeks ago, or last week, I guess, if you go today. Julie walked us through the comparable report systems between the federal and the state accountability and how the reports and how they're mapped to one another. So we reviewed the differences between the federal and state accountability systems. The federal one is somewhat new as far as using the application. And so I think she said it was three years old, maybe the end of sixteen.
It's a six year cycle and we're in year two or three.
Yeah, something like that. So we did have a conversation, though, then later about just a discussion about what does it take for schools, not a district per se, but individual buildings to receive the blue ribbon scholars, blue ribbon schools designation, which you can only have a school designated once every five years for that. And we might drill down a little bit deeper on that in future meetings. So that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so with that, I would seek a motion to approve. I'll second it. Okay, we have a motion by Matt and a second by Kelly, further discussion? If not, it was a favor.
I am.
Pose. Motion will carry. So at this time, we will reject the nine from the finance committee, nine B and C.
The reason we pulled these is because they are pretty significant expenditures when you look at the dollar amounts associated with them. And as a group, we agreed to bring this to the full board because of the current state of affairs and the situation the school's in. And when we're looking at significant expenditures, we felt that this was an appropriate thing to make sure that this is a priority for this board as a whole, that we felt that could make sense for our constituents, that type of expenditure. So I think we can take the first one, which is part one, engineering lab. And I'm going to turn it over to you, Brady, to stay because it was anyway, to discuss because you're the one that knows what we're looking to do here.
Sure, so this year we budgeted to replace our engineering lab. The computers in that lab are the highest level computers we have in the entire school district. Obviously, they're running some pretty significant programs. The AutoCAD suite is the biggest of them. So they require the best processors. Typically, we buy I five processors. These devices require, the programs they run require I seven processors. And then what we do is we basically take the devices that are in there and we cycle those through other spots. In this case, it would be the Fab Lab and then we would cycle the Fab Lab ones out and put them into some of our assistance and some of our extenuating spots that we have devices. So that, that's the budgeted, you can see we budgeted about twenty four thousand dollars. I've got quotes from numerous different companies and different types of devices. And the bids are at twenty three six two five for the devices that we would be seeking.
Amy, this is out of the existing budget, something when Brady was talking to me about. This is a little, a little bit of a difference with how Michelle and I go about district finances and purchasing. So there are monies that Brady was, and other, but Brady specifically, was used to spending out of his existing budget that the previous business manager would want to spend for the next year. But the way that Michelle and I's experience has led us is that that's, we'll deal with next year with next year's budget. So that left quite a few dollars available for these decisions to be a possibility for us. So we saw this as a financial opportunity to say that, okay, next year's dollars and spending is for next year's budget, this is for now. So that's why it's available inside of the existing budget, his budget. That's a very important.
And is it, do we have to make that decision? The reason I was talking about this in our committee is it's just the timing of the decision for these dollars amounts. And we don't even know if we're going to be back in school or when we'll be back in school. So that was kind of a concern why we went to bring it to the full board. You know, what would happen if we don't use this money this month or next month? Or it'll still be there and we come back and bring this back at a later date, we're not.
Yeah, so I would say specifically to this decision, honestly, we're just trying to fall in line with the March twentieth purchases. with the March 20th purchasing deadline, you know, realistically. If you told me that in this situation that we wanted to wait and see how things hash out and you're comfortable with this being brought back in June, you know, we could absolutely do that, you know. I would say on this one more probably than the next one, only because this one, we can get ready quickly where the next agenda item takes potentially the weakest.
From a, yep, from a school finance perspective, the reason that we're talking June is we have to, if we're doing purchases out of this year's budget, they don't need to be just purchased, they need to be received from an auditing standpoint for us to pass the audit. So I just want to throw that out there. They have to actually be in the district for us not to get penalized in the audit that happens every year.
So my question to you then Brady would be, what is the turnaround time to get 25 I-7 processors?
In a dream, I mean, right now, obviously, the global technology market is heavily reliant on things coming out of the Asian markets that aren't sitting very well right now. I would for sure look to see in May, we would like to, because realistically, it would probably take that kind of time. I don't know for sure that we could get them, but right now I'm hearing somewhere in the four to six week range is what they're expecting. Things that they don't have stateside right now, that's what it's, that's what they're looking at. So if you are comfortable saying, you know, see where the current state of affairs goes on this and we sit on this until May and David and Michelle are comfortable with holding that money, I have zero problem on this to say we can sit on this for a couple of months. This one, we could sit on for a couple of months.
Brady, what makes the difference, yes, yes wise? Will the computers be more expensive in June or?
I don't think cost will be the issue, I think availability will be the issue. Yep, I don't think cost will change a whole lot. I mean, maybe, you know, a couple hundred dollars on it, but I don't think it'll change a whole lot on availability. But I could absolutely contact him as well, our reps, and see where they are at. And if, you know, things start to look bad, it could always come back again in April. Or, you know, I guess just to give you guys the flexibility on that.
At the risk of sounding like I don't know a lot about computers, like the rationale for replacing these is that they are four years old and I know computers get old and they get replaced. But is this a need or a want?
This, if you told me we had to get by, I would have to make adjustments to the programs we allow our engineering kits to use in future years.
Okay, so the reality is whether we do it today or do it in a couple of months, in order for the engineering programs for the next four years to function, we.
I'm going to be coming yet.
We have to get these computers, so.
Give me a tip, this direction.
I can appreciate your concern, I am. I just think it's money we're going to spend. We have a robust engineering program, they need the computers to run it. And I don't, I don't think we're going to shut school down for the next four years. So I think purchasing, we give Brady the opportunity to make sure we get them delivered in this budgetary year as important.
I would so move.
That's second.
Motion by Mike and a second by Matt. Further discussion? If not, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Aye. Okay.
Motion carries. We can move on to Part Two, which is in regards to replacing a significant number of smart boards within the district. I guess I didn't, I didn't realize the true age of some of the smart boards that we're looking to replace. This is a significant financial commitment of $66,675. And the materials, if you have them available too, you'll be able to review them. That's replacing 21 smart boards. I think the fact that one of the points Brady made is when dealing with the salesperson and looking at some of the age of our smart boards at our current day classroom, they were a bit flabbergasted. Because what's our oldest smart board currently, Brady?
Twenty years.
Twenty years or?
Probably against record, honestly. Our salesman said he's never seen any Eagle Test 14, so.
So, so I think in continuing to maintain a high quality smart classroom, which is important to our staff, I think we were in favor of this, but again, because of the price tag and the issues we discussed with the previous agenda item, we wanted to bring this to the full board instead of having to begin a consent agenda.
Just want to say from a financial perspective and just to remind all the board, if you haven't been told already, I did ask for all the administrators not to be at this meeting, including Michelle. So if they came into meetings, I had them leave. So that was something that I directed, with the exception of Brady and myself. But respective finances, this, like the first item that you've already approved, this is all within existing budgets. So we're not looking for new building, we're not going to fund balance, we're not doing any of that. So this one is exactly the way that I'd like for the administrative team to work as a team with their budgets, which I've given them control to operate. You look at the bottom where it says financial commitment, both the high school and the middle school are committing dollars from their budgets. So Mr. Grubie and Mr. Lehman are committing dollars from their budgets. Mr. Messenberg is committing dollars from his budget and we have resales from the Chromebooks. So that's exactly the type of financial work that I'd like for the administrative team to be doing. So this is just a good example of that.
My only questions here, Brady, are how many, how many smart boards between the middle school and high school do we have?
We have 130 in the entire school district right now. So between the two buildings, we probably have about 95.
So is there a plan as this is replacing 21 of them that on some type of cycle, so?
Yeah, so what I'm going to do is we're going to, we would take these, we're going to do them by subject area because then I can provide PD. Instead of just going straight off the oldest aged boards, I can't provide PD to one-on-one teachers and that. I'm going to take their boards then that are newer, five, six, seven years, and we're going to replace those 20-year-old ones. So it's just like the devices, this is going to have kind of the ripple effect throughout. But then that allows me and Kristi and myself to then actually work with a high school math team and say, okay, these boards are so much more than they were 15 years ago with their capabilities built into them. They are TVs just like this. So essentially, the days of a projector and the smart board that you maybe have seen in your child's classroom, those days are over. There's no more projectors. They are this, they're touchscreen 75-inch flat panel TVs. That's what you're going to need.
And the issue would be to get 21 smart boards and get them installed.
Nineteen. So the top one that says 21, originally, Mr. Grubie thought he was going to have money to buy 21 or two more. On the bottom there, we see it's 19 for the total amount of $60,320.
I was just reading here.
I know. Sorry.
Want just to reiterate that this, these are, you know, multiple, three different administrators working with dollars that I've given them direct control of operating and saying, hey, I don't need this. I'm doing a good job inside of my individual budgets. I want to spend it on this because I see it as a good short and long-term investment.
So just to give you, Mr. Munoz mentioned, you know, the significant money we got off of our Chromebook resale. We got a slammin' deal off of our sale of our old Chromebooks of the $24,500. And then the reason there is so much money left in the tech budget, we got a screaming deal on our Chromebooks this fall that we used to replace our third through fifth grade devices. They came in about $20,000 under budget of what we expected them to be, what they were a year ago. So that is really the vast majority of the funds are coming from those, you know, those two sources.
So you're saying the money's actually already there?
Yeah.
It's just reallocation of it.
So reallocation, the monies are.
See, I'm going to motion. Okay, I like the motion.
Okay, so you have a motion by Mark, and a second by Peter.
Twenty years is crazy.
Are we going to repurpose these or are we going?
So yeah, that's a great question. So what I'm going to, when I take these 20, right now, we spend a lot of money. We spend about $5,000 a year on just maintenance of the boards. I'm hoping this will get us two to three years where I will have parts and replacements now to work on other boards that, you know, projectors are $700 right now. So we just took in 19 projectors and that we can then use. And truly, my hope is I'm going to be coming due in a year. Each building has their own tech budgets that they spend on maintenance. I'm telling the principals, try to save that and maybe every year, we can try to knock off another two or three out of money you don't need to spend now on replacing, fixing. So we can maybe cycle through and try to stay on that 10-year cycle that, you know, most school districts have.
Mine, oh, you did, that was your only question?
That was, how we, whatever we.
No, and I think it's great, I'm still just a little nervous with what we're sitting in and just bad timing. You know, I know it's in the budget, but we don't know what could come down the plate in a couple of months either that we might need and there. Just worried, but.
Well, I think that, I mean, to address that, I, disclosure, we, walking down here, we had a conversation about like, what does the COVID-19 concern, like what does that create for liabilities for us depending on what happens? There were not a lot of dollars that I could see at that point. And I think that's why, one of the reasons we maintain a fund balance is to deal with things outside our controls. So I'm in favor of this.
Any other discussion? If not, all is in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Aye. Motion will pass. All right, moving on to Item 10, Discussion of Past Position and Approval of the Monthly Vouchers List.
We were presented with monthly voucher list. This, as soon as I can find it, for this meeting, the monthly voucher list totaled $684,717.46. We were given a summary of some of the things that might step outside the norm. We had legal bills of a little over $5,300. There's an expense for discipline associates, which is Speaker Brian Medler, which is $7,000. We had payments for the preschools, pool sound system, storybook kids, and the quarterly 4K payment and some contributions, some TSA contributions. So with that being said, I would make a motion to approve the monthly vouchers.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Matt and a second by Mike.
I just have a question. What's the TASA consultants?
TSA?
Yeah. It's right here.
Yeah, I shelved it in here, what do you think?
I think it's the retirement payrolls.
Yes, that's correct.
Any other questions?
Flip a 401K up for schools.
Okay. Yeah.
I have a question on me with voting remotely on this one and not being able to find whether or not I even should vote on it.
I think this is.
Wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I heard that on the last call today, that you can absolutely vote remotely.
Okay, so yes, you're okay, Peter?
Okay.
Okay, roll call vote.
Please.
Barnes?
Yes.
Baumann?
Yes.
Q S?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hermaning?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Zebra?
Yes.
Oh, yes, okay, thank you. Moving on, Item 11, Discussion of Past Position and the Acceptance of the Monthly Treasuries Report.
We were briefed on some of the figures for the treasures report that I'll share with you, general checking. We, as of March 17th, 2020, we had $1,271,328. And in our general investments, we had $6,739,256. So the money on hand was now $8,005,84. With a budgeted June 30th, 2020 fund balance of $9,073,528. And with that, I would make a motion to approve the treasures.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Matt and a second by Mike. Further discussion or questions? If not, roll call vote, please. Hanson? Hanson? Peter, you there?
Yeah, definitely, I had the mute on, sorry, I said yes like four times.
Here you go. Hermaning?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Zebra?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Baumann?
Yes.
Q S?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
All yes. Okay, thank you. I have 12 discussions, school board, superintendent, communication.
Yeah, I have several things outside and I will add at the upfront before I jump to it, that COVID-19, there's quite a bit of that that's not actually written. But financially, we are still sitting and I do check on a weekly basis 34% fund balance. So our fund balance is still right around 34%, a little bit above, eight and a half to nine million, depending on the markets. And a lot of other things, a lot of other factors. So financially, we're extremely stable right now. So we're well positioned just based on this board's fiscal responsibility. With respect to the COVID-19 crisis, our school nurse, Nurse Gattle, she's been absolutely outstanding. There's five parts of the pandemic plan. She was referencing several, surveillance, communication, infection control, continuity of learning and continuity of operations. I've taken charge of continuity of operations, obviously with a lot of help. Continuity of learning is what was sent out to all parents and students with respect to what they're going to be doing from an educational perspective, distance learning. Tried to get the board abreast of all of those pieces as they became available. The surveillance, communication, and infection control, those are all pieces that are part of the pandemic plan. But I want to be very clear that Nurse Gattle didn't bring it up in her presentation, but as of right now, as of, I checked at three o'clock today, there are still no COVID-19 cases in Marathon County. Clearly, we have none in the Mozzanee School District. I did receive a few calls and emails with what changed with my decision to close school on Sunday after waiting the weekend, to be very clear. There's a lot of considerations in closing school, like food for students who are used to getting food from us twice a day. That's something that a lot of our staff, we did over 200 meals today, including over 50 deliveries. So over 200 meals today and over 50 deliveries. And we'll continue that for the next three days. A lot of things for students, including those that drove up or walked out between 11 and 12. I know specifically that Katie Caldwell and Jeff Soderberg did over 40 deliveries themselves in blessings in a backpack. So the decision to call school, there's a lot of factors in it, but with no COVID-19 cases in Marathon County and clearly no cases in our school district, that, part of that was weighing, but we had several medical professionals that I was consulting through the weekend, multiple, including Dr. Lamont, but other doctors as well. I was working with other school districts and I was of the opinion very early in the process, maybe late Friday night, that it was the right call. But we were, we waited to see if anything was going to change, but made the call that way. Terms of COVID-19 cases, so the food service piece is operations. We'll continue that every day this week through Friday. We'll have spring break off because there's a lot of staff that have picked up. A lot of teachers, educators, parent educators that were packing meals, including myself, and delivering and handing out food, which was great. So like I said, over 200 meals and then over 50 deliveries. We're assuming that's going to pick up. We'll continue that after spring break and every day until we come out of the crisis. It's real important to me, our new food service director who has done a great job, Haley Harmon, she's done a great job of coordinating it and taking donations from the community. So we've had churches and other people in the community that have reached out and donated and then we're just 100% turning those donations around and giving them to families. Other things that we're working on, I have had feedback from about a dozen and a half staff members and community members. I have reached out to Aspiris and to Marshfield concerning healthcare workers that might have childcare issues. So I'll be following up on that likely before the weekend because we have had about a dozen and a half or so staff and community members that have said that they would be available to assist in that need. So I have had some outreach with that as well. So in terms of the pandemic plan itself, we're moving along. Teachers are doing a very good job. There's been communication pretty openly and regular from my part to the point where I'm probably going to try to slow down a little bit, maybe one a day, maybe one every other day, that kind of thing, in order to let people settle in to a little bit of a system. It was an order by the governor today and that's brand new news. I did send that to all the board, if you didn't have a chance to read it, I'll just give a brief. The governor extended the school closure, I believe his words were indefinitely at this time. Indefinitely to the end of this health crisis. So we're looking for interpretations as to what that means. We don't know yet, but it is something we'll be working on on a regular basis. One of my big tasks after this board meeting is return to school and. One of my big tasks after this board meeting is return to school and return to regular operations. So, some of the things that we have done, I chose not to require teachers to come in yesterday. So, my decision was, I allowed teachers to come in if they chose to come in, but I made it very clear to them and to the administrative team, uh, that it's optional, that they were going to come in effective yesterday. Uh, and I'll continue to do that, we've had a lot of staff come in, I mean, including teachers. And I was around talking to them and that sort of thing, so I agree on things optional, it's how, all things optional with staff. Uh, my intention, once we get through the, uh, food delivery that we have set up through Friday, um, is to start even, uh, tailoring down even more and, and, and taking a full seven days to kind of let things settle out in terms of the medical situation on the ground.
David, I'd just like to interject, and then in our meeting, Steve, um, also said his, um, maintenance man is, um, they're, they're coming in, they're doing, they're doing some maintenance and some projects that was on the list, why nobody's in the school, so, makes great sense to me.
Yeah, the maintenance people are picking up, we're, we're, we're doing something, we're trying to get, have a plan. So, Steve and I, and I also approved Brady today, um, his crew, uh, because we had already had some things planned, uh, in order to get like, for example, uh, the P A system, uh, that's already been approved by the board. All those things are kind of already in motion, paid for, money's changed hands. So, we're taking a little bit of an opportunity with that and getting those things fully done. Uh, but I have strictly limited access, so I've removed fingerprint access for just about everybody, with the exception of a very few number of people. Um, and the intent there is to completely limit the access to our facilities and to take the burden off of our cleaning, uh, staff. Because they've been pushing really hard since I gave them an order on the third of March. You know, I had projected kind of early when I was reading things about what was going on in Europe. So, we started a cleaning process that's been extremely, uh, detailed and high level since the third of March. Um, electrostatic materials and sprays and the highest level of cleaning we've been doing on a daily basis since the third of March. So, you know, I've been pushing our cleaning staff pretty hard, and I've moved them all the first, uh, first shift, um, effective Monday, we start to give them a little bit of a break, but also to keep them sort of moving along in the process.
One question I have then, after spring break, are they doing, you know, that's when they go to, um, online classes or whatever? Um, what if the kids have stuff in their lockers and they need to get help?
Yeah, they can, they can email me or one of their principals, it's a good question, they can, we're dealing with that, I was dealing with that right during the board meeting. So, a parent would email me and then really, since I'm having all the principals actually not be there as well, I'd be the one, and I'd just go and help them get whatever they need.
We've kind of set up a lot of them through the lunch pickup, it's worked out really well with devices with.
Hey, got a couple of people I meet in the morning.
Pick your lunch up, exchange stuff, you know, we'll, we'll make that happen.
So, and I'll get some reminders out there in my communication to all parents, that if anything is needed, that I can assist. We do have a limited number of people, me being one, with access to the building in order to help with that. But, um, we'll be putting more pieces together, one of the big parts is return to normal operations. Um, and you can see that Nurse Gettle, she referenced it, and she's speaking more to the infection control, communication, surveillance, and tying in the health department. She has been spot-on excellent, I say it again, even if they're not here, that, you know, her coordination, her expertise as a trained nurse, uh, who's worked in the private sector, but also the public sector, it gives her some really good perspective then coming to the schools. And then she has her children in our own district as well. Uh, yes.
Have you been hearing, is there a shortage of, uh, childcare services?
There is a shortage of childcare, I mean, they just closed Wassa Childcare, I believe, uh, today or yesterday. So, that's a major, that's a ma- major player in the childcare industry. So, my focus right now is, and, and I, some friends of mine in other parts of the state were starting to do this. Uh, so that was my outreach to Marshfield and Aspiris, I've heard back from Marshfield, not Aspiris yet, uh, because we do have about fourteen or fifteen, uh, either individuals or families that have reached out to assist childcare workers, uh, not childcare workers, to assist healthcare workers with their childcare concerns. I have had some specific questions from, so, from healthcare workers that are parents of ours, who have emailed me and talked to me specifically about this concern. So, that, it, it wasn't just a, a thought, it was a specific interaction that I was having, um, with some of our healthcare providers who are also parents. Um, so, i- it's looking like we're going to be able to assist with that as well. And yet, there's a lack of one now of COVID-19, I'll try to keep the, the board up to speed. Uh, sometimes at the same time that I made the staff there, but sometimes before. Any questions at all with where we're at right now with COVID-19? There's quite a few, uh, many sticks in the fire, as, as it were, but we continue to work on it on a, an hour-to-hour basis.
Yeah, it is.
Quick question. So, when I compare days out of school, and I think through snow days, which we dealt with a lot last year, there was a question on, are these workdays within our staff's contract, or are they not? And how are they compensated? So, of the days that the school shut down, are those contractual workdays for our staff? Or are they, and to, to the conversation we were having, I think alluding to in finances, if DPI, which I don't expect them to do, says, no, you need to have an extra twenty days of instruction, and are, do our staff's contracts end on a certain day, and then that would be an additional cost to the district? Or, um, do they just have to make up the days in which they weren't in the district?
Yeah, there's a waiver process, the DPI sent that out, so, these are contractual workdays, and I have communicated with all staff members in the district that they will continue to get paid. So, our financial situation is solid, and we, and the continuity of operations, I'll get specifically to your answer in just a quick second. But, we've made sure that payroll and dollars and cents, and that people are going to continue to receive, uh, you know, cash, you know, as it were. In terms of the end of the year, I don't see the end of the year moving. In other words, I don't see us moving until, oh, we have to go to school through the end of June or anything else like that. Largely because the, the state came up with a, a waiver process. And I've already written up the waiver, uh, they have a, a specific form that they said they're going to give out. So, they said they're going to, they're going to waive and allow us to, to get under the amount of instructional minutes in order to still be a full year of school. So, the state has already told us that, they just haven't provided the legal process for me to do the appeal that I've already written. So, that, that specifically answers your question, that we don't have to go deeper into the summer, and it does count as contractual time.
My, my question is specifically, like, I'm with you, like, I read DPI's recommendation, which is vague, it's leading us down the path, and don't worry about this.
Right.
But our job is to prepare for the worst and hope for the best.
Right.
What I want to know is, should DPI change their mind? The sun does not align with the moon. Are we on the hook if we need additional instructional days to negotiate extended contracts with our staff?
No, we're, we're not. We've, I've looked at that from a lot of different angles, and, and worst-case scenario, because I, I plan.
Let's do worst case.
Okay, I plan for the worst and hope for the best kind of thing. But I have a plan for the worst, which is, if it comes to that, specifically each level, elementary, middle school, and high school, has a different number of minutes that are required for each of them. So, it's actually a different answer for the elementary school than it is for the middle school than it is for the high school. It's most difficult on the high school because they have the most required instructional minutes. And there's a calculator out there that, that I can bring and show to the board, it's, it's complicated, if you can figure it out, it's, it's pretty fun. I know how to do it, and, and it's, e- even if you're trained, it's interesting to look at, but you have to subtract, it's, it's whatever. But you get down to your number of instructional minutes, so it's most difficult for all high schools in the state are in the same situation. In all elementary schools, look at this, when it was going to be seven days, most elementary schools are already fine. They're already within that limit, because elementary schools have less required instructional minutes than high school. Whereas high school, elementary would be fine with seven days, and that they have any contractual issues. High school staff, even though they're under the same, you know, uh, uh, school district in agreement, they actually are sitting more, well, we, seven is fine, but they would have to make up four if, if they required it. Just based on minutes, just straight empirical moments.
So, so the, so the, so the solution is really simple. And I did this last year, because you guys only had eight snow days last year, I had twelve. So, the, the solution is quite simple, if we had to do something, we could start school at seven-thirty and end it at four. And you do that for X a number of days, you get passing time, and instead of it five minutes, you make it three minutes. And then all of a sudden, you have the same number of days and the, and the thing is solved. That's exactly how we solved it last year when we had twelve days. So, so that's one way to solve it. Uh, and there's other ways to solve it, including the waiver process, but worst-case scenario, um, I don't think it is, for every day we go on, the governor's order today and directive today takes us farther down the path of, um, the waiver, which I've already written, is going to be the process. And the online pieces that the governor referenced in his first order, he's actually, uh, referencing, um, aspects of DPI, um, uh, administrative rules that allow for online instruction, think of virtual school. Allow for online instruction to count as regular instruction. So, that's really what he's referencing. All we need them to do is to walk all the way with that. And that's just a matter of, you know, a sentence or two from the DPI. So, we're moving forward right now with the idea, Monday and Tuesday are essentially snow days, uh, and fit within our regular schedule. And when we wrote the plan, we, we were basically saying to teachers that their contracted workday is essentially Wednesday and Thursday of this week, and then moving forward after break, we are well within our digital learning plan that we've got, that if the DPI backs off of this and says, nope, you're going to have to make these up, essentially from here on out, we are covered with e-learning moving forward, if, if they do back out of it, not saying they're going to.
Our liability in the state is the three days that we built in from this week. So, there's three days that we threw out there this week, that's our liability, if you will, to the state, which is relatively insignificant with respect to what we could fix in a day or two.
Say it goes for a month, then what?
Well, yeah, and, and actually, some of the projections are at least that. The CDC says four to eight weeks, so that's the CDC. Uh, we're, we're ready, and we're actively, actually every day. I just heard from Julie today, she's having read their conversations with principals, who are in conversation with all of their departments about how things are going and what, what are their needs. So, I already told them, whatever needs they have with respect to this type of environment, that, that I'll, will fill those needs. If it's computers, if it's happy, whatever they need, um, that's going to be our job to, to supply needs in the short term, um, that we're very well positioned to be able to supply.
I'm just saying, I'm thinking as a parent of a elementary student in a middle school, um, student, I, I've just been blown away this week with the, the teachers and preparing them for the virtual, um, work, it's been really impressive. My kids are ready to roll tomorrow morning.
Yeah, and, and out of, out of fairness and respect, actually, for the teachers, I've been talking to the teachers, uh, several different teachers, they put an enormous amount of work, uh, because we were prepping them, you know, last week, it, it was pretty clear to at least me and to several of us that this was the direction we were going. So, our, our educators, our teachers have done an amazing job in a very short period of time to build a robust education and learning platform, um, that I think will help us in the long term. You know, obviously, this is going to help us in the short term until we get through this crisis, but I, I think it'll pay dividends down the road uh, for us as a, as a school district, but also as, as teachers.
What about the resource officer, what, what's going on with him?
Uh, he.
I had two people asking about him.
Yep, the resource officer, uh, he actually, he and I had a conversation today. So, I am keeping first responders, and I talked to Brady about that, they are, he is one that we're keeping, you know, access to the buildings. Because when we go to limited staff, you know, we want to make sure the buildings are secure and they're safe, and he's part of that. So, he's still going to be checking in, but also going on to the road again. So, you know, so he's on the roads, but he told me that specifically.
So, when you say he's on the road, he's working his other job?
Yes, so he's going to be working on the road and then checking in, you know, safety checks, obviously, there aren't kids around.
Right.
Uh, but generally, he's making sure that doors are secure, which is very important to me, so that, you know, that the building stays secure. So, my thought, and, and, you know, this is getting around to that answer, in terms of closing school on Sunday, we've had no issues, we have no COVID-19 in the schools, like, you know, let's keep it that way. Let's keep those doors closed, let's keep people out, anybody out, so that we want to keep it like that. And, and he's part of that plan. His job's a little bit different now, but he's part of that plan.
Well, how are we going to open? How are we going to decide who is that out of the area and what they bring back?
Yeah, return to school, return to work, that's, that's a great question. Uh, we're, we have some lists that we've started, we're working on that right now. Actually, Elise is going to be, uh, heading that up for staff, because there's two parts of that, there's staff and there's students.
Right, and you sent that email out.
Right.
So, if you've been to certain areas, you're quarantined.
Right, that travel guidance letter, that we updated once, it said three-fourteen travel guidance letter from the nurse. That'll be a, one of our lead documents with return, that we were very scripted in there, very directive, and people have been pretty good about it. That, okay, wow, they can't come back to school unless they self-quarantine.
Right.
Because when we sent the first letter, there were only three countries that were on that list.
Right.
By the time we got to the second letter, two days later, there were over thirty-five countries on the list.
Do you have trouble inside the United States?
Well, the, the answer to that is, that becomes more no for every hour we go.
It does.
So, no, I, I'll be more specific. When we wrote the three-fourteen letter, the nurse wrote and I sent the three-fourteen travel guidance letter, there were only three states that were limited in terms of travel. It was Washington, it was New York, and then it was Massachusetts or something, or California.
California.
So, it was California, Washington, and New York. Now, the number of areas kind of keeps going up, it's pretty clear that Florida's on the list. Um, we're getting close to being on that list, because what they, they're talking about is community spread. So, once there's community spread, they've stopped identifying, they're going to continue to identify states. But in Wisconsin, they've decided that in Milwaukee and Dane County, there's community spread in those counties. They're flat-out saying that on their website. So, the words community spread, did somebody, student or staff, go to an area where there's COVID-19 community spread? And that's something that our school nurse who presented to you today, myself, at least from the staff perspective, and several else, that is the critical issue once we, or when we do eventually return to normal operations. Is where have people been, have they self-quarantined, and, and what is, what are our.
How do you prove that?
It's, uh.
I'm just asking, because I know it's going to be.
Well, there's contact tracing, there's contact, we do have people in Marathon County that are self-quarantining. So, there are, there are people, there's been nobody identified yet, we expect it, but there are people that are self-quarantining based on they think they might have been exposed. Okay, so, now that's happening in almost every county. One of our benefits in this particular area versus where my parents live, in Fodalec, unfortunately, there's like fourteen or whatever cases. I haven't been there, unfortunately, and been there months, my parents would say that's not good of me, but, uh, they.
Bad son.
I know.
Bad boy.
I know. We FaceTimed the whole, that's good. But, uh, so community spread is the answer to the question. And how do we monitor it? Uh, she was starting to give some answers to that about, you know, to be ready about infection control in somebody who's COVID-19 positive. At this point, there's not been any of that in our district schools or by district residents or students. But, we need to prepare for the possibility. Um, direct, uh, are there any other COVID-19 questions at all? Um, direct, uh, are there any other COVID nineteen questions at all? And if there are, it, it can be outside of the meeting, or email, or phone call, please reach out. Couple other things that I listed out here, um, had some actually really good, uh, discussions with the YMCA. I was supposed to have a follow-up meeting today, which, uh, they closed the Y. And we've been pretty busy, so we pushed the meeting. But we'll be following up with a, a good, they're gonna cut our rates a little bit, and it was a good initial meeting. So, but before anything happens, I'll make sure to bring it back to the board. So that's a Fund eighty issue. Um, was it the Area Destination Task Force, that is a tourism piece, which I was a part of, it was fun, but kind of on a back burner right now. I will get an email out about that, yes.
Back to what issue, wasn't there a thing of what we could do it, do it for ourselves?
We're, we're looking at all options right now, we've not made a commitment, but.
Ask them back to the board?
Right.
Alright.
All come back to the board. That would all come back to the board with dollars and cents. I just wanted to let you know that there's been some positive meetings, and they've pretty much agreed to cut us a deal. But we haven't seen any hard numbers yet, May, okay? Uh, compensation committee meeting, it was actually, uh, relatively uneventful, but very helpful. There's a lot of good progress, uh, to set us up for our next meeting. Uh, this piece about continuity of learning, um, I shifted some more dollars in accounts that, that usually the superintendent would have spread, spent. And I put it into growing some of our, our principals, plus Julie and Mary, um, and that's what that's about. So that's another year sort of thing, that's, it's professional development, um, that they've been doing. And aside from that, I met with Mr. Matthew from Crystal Finishing. It's a healthy meeting, it was fun to see some of the things that he's planning in our community. Um, uh, just a meet and greet and, and some good conversations with a, a local community member. If that's all I have, do you have any questions?
Matt, uh, you had a question number five, I think, is that, is that what was carrying over in our financial, we got seven thousand dollars?
Um, seven thousand, it was, they actually, it was similar dollars, but I had shifted, there, there was a lot of money that, uh, either Ann or, or John had left in a budget for professional development. So I shifted a lot of that.
Well, it wasn't as much with the money, it was what were to happen, because he met with them face to face, but sorry to take it, that, that was the question, is if he can't come back, does it all.
Oh, 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 we had actually, before the COVID nineteen crisis, we had already set up, uh, phone conferences. So that's, uh, we're gonna, not gonna meet again until June, and then again in December. But then there's some set, uh, phone conferences that are already preset with him, like coaching conferences. And he's, uh, Dr. Schrader was a superintendent of the year, high quality principal, do I know him really well? Yes. Um, but he and I see eye to eye in terms of how to do the principalship, so that's one of his big drives.
Got it.
Good guy.
Took me a minute to remember what you were about.
Yeah, that's okay. Alright, so that's all I have.
Okay, any questions? Alright, moving on, thirteen, old business discussion and possible decision, staffing timeline update.
Yep, there was just a date, it was a minor thing. Uh, we had to switch to February twenty-sixth for some numbers on the staffing timeline, so I just need to have that approved. We had to adjust the timeline just based on what we actually did.
Okay, do we need a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to adjust February twenty-sixth.
I'll say it.
No?
Go ahead.
Either one.
Okay, thank Kelly Kelly.
Yep, thank you.
Questions? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion will carry. Item fourteen, new business, discussion and possible decision of the acceptance of a donation for an aerator purchase for the athletic.
Yeah, we're really excited about this, because there's five, six, seven, eight thousand dollars in fundraising for, uh, this particular purchase, which, uh, is, was just absolutely awesome. Several of our programs, um, including soccer, uh, NASA, high school athletics programs, have kicked in quite a bit. Uh, the rest will take out of existing dollars in Steve's budget. Um, and this piece will greatly speed up our process for field preparation in the spring and in the summer and the fall.
David, we did touch on this a little bit, what is the total face of this here?
Uh, that's on the next page.
Okay, gotcha.
So regular is thirteen.
Okay, we're good, yep, got it.
So a lot of that was fundraised, which is just great.
Okay.
So do we need a motion? I'll make the motion to approve the aerator.
Okay, we have a motion to make, is there a second?
Are they getting, are they getting that, uh, multi-tight head, that included in that or not? Cause that is included as the price. Just to, to slip it out of.
This is just for the donation right now, except for the donation.
Oh, okay, I thought it was repurchase.
So you're gonna second?
I'll say it.
Okay. Second by Mark, further discussion.
Can someone just, I, I don't know, in my mind, I think I know what this is, but I just.
It's just a subject.
And the person that got to actually see this real last year.
No, he wants to know what it is.
Oh.
He wants to know what.
So it's poke holes in the grass and.
Yeah, so essentially what it does, right now we rent an, an aerator. This machine does three things at once, so it aerates, but it vibrates the ground, and it reseeds then, so it shoots it in the holes, and then it packs it back down afterwards.
Hope so, hole's coming out.
Pretty fantastic.
Right, so the first part is just accept the donations for that. So we do have a motion and a second. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Now, item fourteen B, discussion, uh, and possible decision, approval of the matching donations for the aerator purchase with existing digit, district budget funds.
Right, so this is out of, uh, we have, he, Steve has, uh, plenty of money available in his budget, we're not looking for extra dollars. We're just wanting to keep the board be fully transparent with, with how we, we came to pay for that, mostly with donated dollars.
Yeah, I just didn't know if that optional piece was included, I mean.
My understanding that it is.
Alright.
Steve did also fill us in that, that it does work on the artificial turf.
Yes, it does.
Oh, so it will work on all the fields.
That is true.
We can grow more.
Yeah, so we, so we can keep that still growing.
Okay, so we have a motion by Matt, is there a second?
Just, just.
Yes, okay, any other questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Item fourteen C, discussion and possible decision, approval of the Fall 2020 Start College Now and Early College Credit Program applications.
This is a, a, a regular piece in every school district, so these are students that are, are taking courses, either dual credit courses or AP courses, um, and then we pay for the tuition. There's actually no choice in the matter, uh, it's, it's a state.
I have a total.
State.
Okay, a motion by Mike and a second by Kelly for their discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Item fourteen D, discussions, splash pad.
There's, uh, put this on, I've had several meetings, uh, two or three about this splash pad since the, and this is discussion only, so there's no decision that's necessary. Just wanted to make sure to get everything out there. So I talked to city administrator Jeff Gates, and he went to the city council, they're supportive. And, and I worked about an hour on that top sentence with the, the city administrator. Is that the city council is supportive of splash pad in our community, but at this time, the city council is not open to constructing, financing, or operating this splash pad.
Weird idea, don't ask me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, no, I, that's, that's what, uh, Mr. Gates and I, uh, uh, that's what they said. So, we've confirmed the pool of water needs to be drinkable water. Uh, Fund eighty, if the board chooses to finance, construct, and operate a splash pad, we would need to levy the full amount, uh, to Fund eighty, uh, which means it increases taxpayers beyond what we need for the inside pool and auditorium operations. I just wanna make it clear, this is strictly a Fund eighty piece, because it has no, no fund ten or regular fund, um, appropriation. Uh, do I think that there's, there's been a suggestion about teaming up with the city? Uh, I don't know what that means, I can explore that more.
I think, uh, what we discussed earlier, uh, when we met to plan for this, we still think that there's a lot of work, there's a lot of work that needs to be done before it really comes back to come back for any type of, because we can figure, you know, do we have maybe potential spots to put it?
Yes.
Yes. What would that look for as far as the cost as far as donating that land? Cause it's gonna be a cost as well.
Correct, the community group that came to me, I, I met with a, a member of the community who has a, a pretty good number of people that are willing to donate money. They're looking to do this a hundred percent donation. They're looking to build something with a hundred percent donation. So they're not asking for money from the school board to build a splash pad. What they're asking for, and I wrote it down in my notes, is the possibility of consideration in the future for a piece of land, um, and the possibility from out some operational expenses. But, uh, the, the community member that I talked to was very adamant about not wanting to burden the board or the taxpayers, but that, that, that she felt very confident that she could fundraise every dollar to build it. And she would need assistance with land, probably our land, uh, and, uh, and perhaps some operational expenses.
And there's the, Doug keep down the road, because we live in Wisconsin and it's not exactly conducive of this type of environment as we're finding out.
You also have to staff.
Yes.
Well, we were talking about, the conversation I had with the community member was, was no staff. That building a, uh, building a facility that was a no staff facility, similar to Marathon Park. So we have detailed numbers about, Marathon County Park spends money on staff because they charge.
To get in.
To get in, but then, they don't, they don't. They don't have a guard, they don't have a guard there.
This, this would be comparable to the operations outside the Grand Theater where it's just in the park.
Yeah.
My two, my two cents on this real quick is this is not a Mozeni school district. This shouldn't be, like, the city, this should be part of the park system within Mozeni. And the idea that we would have to do the spring and fall maintenance on it, and deal with the busted pipes and all those things, like, I would encourage this community member, if you talk to him, to show up and speak to Jeff Gates and the mayor and the elected officials who live in the city of Mozeni to provide that, especially if they can fund it as part of the park system here. Just don't see an educational component to this, of why we would, why we would take that on as a school district, that doesn't make sense.
And, and the, this particular community member, I think is at a meeting tonight related to this, and has been at one previous meeting. So, uh, I, I'm just trying to be the conduit, I don't have a recommendation.
I pretty much agree with that, because the department, I always, some of the stuff that was there five years ago was there when I was a kid. You know, and a couple of things broke, well, they were gonna update it, and all they did was remove it. But they said there's, my older lady at that time, she just said that there's money there that they just usually don't spend. I don't know where it all goes, I know they have a budget, but, you know, I don't know, how big it is.
I, I thought that our conversation, I have multiple meetings on this, and one of them, but they predated the, the most serious part of this COVID nineteen piece, so it's, it feels like months away, but it, it probably, I'm pretty sure it was last week, that, uh, she was trying to get to the, their board, I thought, tonight. And she had already met with the full city council about this within the last month. So I know there's been a lot of interactions with, not just one, but multiple community members and Facebook group. Uh, you know, and there's some interest in the community. So I've taken meetings and.
I just think there's a whole lot more we have to be, you know what I mean? And, and like I said, I, I believe what, if, if I heard correctly also, there is nothing from the board as far as money or whatever. It's just wants our support and possibly like David sent some land or.
Going back to the funding, you know, they're the same thing, how the people were on the board when they had that, we started the baseball field, and they said there was people that really wanted to donate a lot of money, and, you know, none of that came to fruition either, just.
Yeah, I think this is something that, the reason I pulled possible decision is, there's no need for a decision in the short term, because I've got it on directly from this community member and the group that she's working with, that they're not looking for us to build a splash pad. You know, that they wanna, they feel confident that they can raise those funds themselves. They're not looking for us to put up two, three hundred, whatever. They're, they're looking for the possibility of land and the possibility of some operation stuff.
I, I would be supportive of, uh, land if it comes to that. But honestly, I don't think this is our responsibility. And I would just leave it at that.
And I'm gonna do my, my opinion now. I think you've done your due diligence to help facilitate in connecting the community member with the resources. The ball is in their control, let them run with it, but this is not a priority of you, in my opinion, you've wasted enough time on the issue. I agree.
I've invested enough time.
Yes.
How's that?
Yeah, there you go.
That's more different.
I just wanna be blunt, I mean, it's, it, there's no educational value in it. So if they think that this is a priority, then you, you connected them, they can run with the ball.
And, and we talked about that early, we just said that there's just so much work in here, discipline, we can involve us at all, but we've said we bring it back to look at and. Yeah.
And, and the group and the, and the, the, the community member, I can even be very supportive, very nice, very understanding, actually, of, of the decision this board made, I wanna say that in full credit to the person in that group, that they were like, yeah, that pool did not belong outside, the, the waiting pool didn't belong there. Hundred percent, I mean, I, I've got that on. So actually, it was a very cordial and good conversation. I just wanted to bring it back, cause I know a board member talked about bringing it back.
I guess though, for, for future, though, if you want just to reach back onto them and just say, you know, you know, if they've got a lot more going on, and maybe update it at a later date. Your goal, you know, you know what they just feel in the blind side.
I do.
Okay, so next item, discussion and pick up in, discussion only, pick up and drop off at elementary school. And Peter, this was, I believe, your agenda item you wish to bring back, correct?
So one of the things about this piece is I wanted to put up a proposed, and I note the word proposed, ten-year construction plan. And this is a, something that Steve has worked out. We're not, my intent, uh, before COVID nineteen crisis was to be bringing this to the, uh, strategic planning committee, and then getting some feedback, and then eventually bringing it to the court. And this, this tenure, this has to do with Fund four, Fund forty-six. So as much as I've been talking about Fund forty-six this year, this piece right here, uh, uh, the ten-year construction plan proposed, twenty twenty, twenty thirty, we set to put an order of things, uh, that need to get done in the school district. So one of the things on there, uh, with respect to the elementary school, is the elementary parking lot. Alright, we've already pre-identified that, if you look down, we did it by school, high school, middle, and elementary. That the high, the, the elementary parking lot, uh, including expansion, is, is one of the top, uh, three or four overall issues of like eighteen or nineteen different, uh, maintenance issues. So it, it is something that's on our radar screen, it's right at the top of our radar screen. And I do wanna note that this is tentative and proposed right now. But one of the reasons that pool and auditorium upgrades are up next at the top is, and I can speak for Steve in this regard, is some of those things, if they go down, we're gonna have to fix them regardless.
Or close the pool.
Or close the pool. Like, uh, the sand filter, good example. If the sand filter goes down in the pool, we don't have a choice. So some of the prioritizations that have already happened with the finance committee and with this whole board, this proposed Fund forty-six ten-year maintenance plan, uh, is, is, this is our first shot at looking at, uh, long-term planning uh, for Fund forty-six. So actually, uh, the, while the parking at the elementary school isn't ideal, we realize it, uh, and, and we're ready to move on it pretty quickly, um, meaning extending it, extending it across that open field on the, on the cemetery side. Um, and, and if there's any sort of expansion to the fourth grade, uh, I wanted to bring it up in the health presentation, that we're one of the few middle schools in the state that has fourth grade and a middle school. That's not a common thing at all. You know, my wife is an elementary teacher, and her elementary school goes through sixth grade. So, which is a little uncommon on that, and usually it's fifth grade. So, so, a lot of these recommendations have been floated about. The fourth grade wing at the elementary school was brought up in my read about three or four years ago, um, in, with the school board and the community. Um, so it's a need, and these are certain things we feel we can get done, depending on how we come through the summer and the crisis, within the next three years, a couple of the top items.
Peter, did you have anything to add?
I'm sorry, Diane, I didn't hear you.
Did you have anything you wanted to add with that?
Um, you know, it's just not a priority, obviously, right now, I guess the, one comment I would have is, if we do get up and rolling again, maybe to, uh, reach out to, uh, Chief Mueling and just see if there's any accident histories that would warrant shutting down that single entry, the, the west entry into the elementary parking lot, and we would only use the, the, um, the in and out on the, uh, the east end. That, that, that was really where my concern was, because you've got that entrance so close to that intersection, I've seen so many cars heading east and then, um, the car in front of them turns on the brakes to, uh, turn into the parking lot, and I've seen a lot of near misses, but I don't know what kind of accident history there is there.
I, I just have a comment about the spreadsheet that's on the screen. And I talked about this when we, um, passed the last budget, or whatever steps we were at in that, and I, I brought up the idea of, um, taking two or three percent of our annual budget and putting the money into a sinking fund for things that we know down the road, we are going to have to pay for, which is this type of thing. And it's prudent to save. I understand the idea of borrowing, I mean, there, that's also a valid approach to some of this. Um, but I'm going to, I'm gonna advocate for, in our next budget process, that we set aside money for things that we're gonna spend money on in ten, fifteen, twenty years, whether it's boilers or a new roof on our buildings. Um, you know, I'm not talking about for projects like the replacement of the big smart boards. Um, I'm talking about big infrastructure. And if we're not prudent about things down the road, um, and, and, and there are folks in our, in the community would say, well, if you're putting aside money, we won't maybe be, even be alive when we're gonna have to spend that money, but it's still prudent as an organization. We're the trustees, all of the stakeholders, have, have an interest in keeping our buildings in good order going forward.
Yeah, it's my intention and Michelle's intention to come to the board, likely in May.
Okay.
With a dollar amount where we can start exactly what you're talking about. So Fund Forty-Six is active for the first time in the history of this district at the end of April. And we're gonna start utilizing that as a vehicle to do exactly what you're talking about.
We, we used to do that in the district, Diane, you remember that, and at some point in the last twenty years, eighteen years, that process ended, and the money has gone toward replacement, but then it wasn't used since then.
Yeah, and they were using, I look back at that, they were using Fund Forty-One.
Okay.
Which was the old, that still exists, but Fund Forty-Six is relatively new, so what they were using was Fund Forty-One. And by doing that, they were actually, and they didn't, everybody, everybody was in the same situation. But that was, Fund Forty-One was the way back then, uh, to do exactly what you're saying. But by doing that, you were actually penalized financially as a district, so that's why people stopped using that. But now that Forty-Six is available, it's aidable, and that's why that's the, we have five hundred dollars in there right now.
Right, right.
But once we get to, to May, that's a usable fund, so Forty-One will stay as a fund.
Right.
But not one that we would ever use.
I understand.
Uh, largely because we can receive maximum aid from the state while limiting the amount of taxes that we need from local taxes.
Right, I understand.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you. Alright, we're moving on to item F, discussion and possible decisions, school board norms.
Yep, uh, this was great, it was brought up, uh, as a, I put on several of them, I actually pulled up this folder, and if all the board members, you'll remember this little activity that we did, and actually, I've saved all the notes from this activity, and I put three of the five norms, because I know the three norms that are listed there with respect to teacher plan and role models were ones that everybody agreed on. But there were some other ones that were starting to come out there about no surprises, being genuine, uh, thought processes and different thought processes, um, and we didn't really, we had spent a lot of time in that session in the summer last year on norms, that was the activity that we were working on, um, but we, we didn't quite come to the resolution of that because of time. We had done a lot, we had done Fund Forty-Six, we had done norms, uh, it was a great meeting, but it, it, it got very long, so, um.
Yeah, I think we revisit this again, I wanna kinda look into this and just kinda, what we had talked about, uh, I don't know how long ago it was, one of the sessions, even just having them at your, at your place, setting each one and their norms and that, you know, could we refer to them or whatever we need to, read them before the meetings or whatever, so we respect them, and you know what I mean for, I gotta look at them a little bit too.
Yeah, and I, and I think it's, it was a wonderful thing to actually, when I saw it getting put up there, it was one of the reasons why we did the activity. You know, all those little sticky notes, I saved them all, so I have everybody's writing actually right in front of me. And I kept it on my desk, cause, uh, the board's been operating so well as a unit, um, this way. And the strategic plan, we'll have to delay it, I haven't sent that email yet, but we'll get it done. Uh, we, we need to lay it for medical reasons, obviously, because we have a meeting coming up here. But it, it was one of your, and we're gonna do that, we're gonna get that done. Uh, role models, I, great, respect, I, yes, I, I think we're, we're doing well as a unit that way, and there's always, so that's something that I'll bring back, I think I can get all this written up pretty easy, I saved everything and.
So you just wanna table this for now, or bring it back?
I'll bring it back.
Absolutely.
Bring it back. Alright, we got a little other things to do, Diane.
Okay, um, other reports, Wasby.
Okay, that would be me, and we have coming up in April for new board members, there's gatherings coming up, and I believe ours possibly.
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
In Marathon City, and then in April, and, and May, we have the spring workshops, and you just go to the website and it'll tell you dates and what, what they're gonna do next month. Yeah, that's why I'm not going too far into it, cause the board only knows what's gonna happen.
Next concludes. Alright, item fifteen B, season nine.
Uh, this information was in your packet, but no, uh, the board meeting started at six thirty-two and adjourned at six fifty-seven.
Item, okay. Item sixteen, future agenda items. At this time, is there anybody that would like to bring something forward to next month's meeting?
I think we should hold on to everything, okay, everything.
Uh, we do have a brief closed session, maybe five minutes.
Got it, okay. Item seventeen, we're moving into closed session, so.
Make motion for closed. Make a motion to leave in a second by Matt.
Role models. Bowman, US. Gorman, yes, Hanson. Herman.
Yes.
Kaiser. Maple. Zebra, yes, all yes.
Um, Duncan, is, um, Brady still there?
Yes.
Because I know he's recording this, so I'm assuming with closed session that.